Want to call to order a special meeting of the Board of Education, September 2nd, 2025 o'clock. Lisa, take attendance.
All Board members are present.
Public comment. Dave, can you put the public comment up on the screen? First one from Natalie. "The best time to start and get the kids back to school is when the weather is nice, allowing more to be done outside. We are allowed to go back per the current order. I am hopeful that the return to school gets moving. It's important to get the kids back face to face. There is an option for anyone who is not comfortable. Thank you so much for all you're doing to get these kids back. My children are all very comfortable in masks. The other day, my daughter said she didn't even notice it was on. This can be done safely. My kids also went to day camp for eight weeks and they made it work. Lots of masks and sanitizer and diligent work, but it can be done. Thank you again." Jennifer, "What is the difference between starting in person now versus waiting until October 1st? Why do we have to miss the first month of school?" Steve, "How can we make the schools are, how can we make sure the schools are not using non-toxic cleaners and disinfectants such as hydrogen peroxide when cleaning the schools? It is harmful to both the immune system and microbiome to touch and breathe toxic chemical cleaners." William, "My question and comments are directed to the entire Board. Why is Bloomfield Preschool given a priority over the high school students? It seems counterintuitive to me as our older children are tasked with a much more strenuous workload and time constraints as they prepare for college entrance exams in college. Also, the preschool office is robust, Monday through Friday, 7 to 5, when the rest of the kids seem to be lucky to get half-days face to face. Seems to be unfair again to all of our kids who benefit much more from in-person education. Finally, having watched the board meeting, I got the sense there is zero urgency to face-to-face return. Rather, it seems to be exaggerated debate over metrics. And as Ms. Effers courageously, in my opinion, correctly pointed out, a smokescreen rather than a plan of action to get kids back in school on time and full-time. Parents are feeling a sense of urgency and I hope tonight's meeting is more results-oriented rather than the academic endless debate over metrics. Thank you." Lauren, "What is the plan for Latchkey and the hybrid half-days? Would there be an option to keep the kids at the same facility similar to what West Bloomfield is doing with the Cloud Care program?" Can you move that up? Mark, "Teacher assignment postings are a complete cluster. There is no construency as to how this information is disseminated. The teachers use multiple media platforms to alert their class rosters in the parent portal, also called MyStar, unbeknownst to most parents, still do not have it uploaded. This is a terrible way to release information. VHS is going into the technological future. The process should be much better." Okay, that's it. With that, we will go to general discussion. Pat, I'll hand it over to you for 3A COVID data update. And as I indicated to my colleagues, after each section, we'll stop and we'll go through for questions my colleagues have on the board.
Thank you, President Cohen. Give me just one second. All right, so part one is going to be the COVID data update. And so we'll try to use the most relevant information we have. Keep in mind that as the state reports some of the COVID data, there is a lag. And so we're going with the information we have as of right this moment. So this is something that was shared with the board last week. It's the weekly COVID-19 report coming out of the Oakland County Health Division. One of the things to pay attention to is to far-right total Oakland County case reported by age group. Kind of gives you the breakdown. So 04 equals 1.18%, 5 to 9 is 1.77%, 10 to 13, 14 to 18. So this will be a way for us to update not just you, but the community at future meetings regarding the infection rate per age group, or total cases rather, per age group. So everyone knows kind of what group has the highest amount of cases. As far as the seven-day Oakland County case average comparison, on 8/17, we were at 10.8. On 8/28, we were at 8.9. As of 8/31, we were at 8.8 daily new cases per 100,000. So obviously, it goes without saying, that's the trend we want to see, which is a downward trend. And those case numbers in the eights would put us in yellow as opposed, or high yellow as opposed to low orange. Oakland County positive test rate comparison, on 8/17, we were at 4.4%. On 8/28, we were at 4.1%. And as of 9/1, 4.5. No, anything under 0.9 would be green. So again, we've really been in that that yellow or high yellow or high-yellow, low-orange rate for a little while now. But the main thing, the main takeaway is the trend is going a little bit lower as well. So that's important to keep in mind and that's the trend we're looking forward to seeing. And this is something I want to share with everyone. It's new. Kids 4 to 17 years old with symptoms who live in or attend school in Oakland County now qualify for free testing. That kind of gives you the when and where. So this is something that Oakland County Health Division came out with, which is fantastic. So not only does it increase the capacity for testing, it makes sure that those students who are in the age group of 4 to 17 have someplace to go as well. President Cohen, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, we'll go through. First, Cynthia, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, Howard?
No.
Jackie?
Not at this time.
Okay, Jennifer?
Yeah, so I just was curious to know how many days we have maintained the yellow status?
So let me go back. And so right now, I can't tell you it's been exactly yellow days for X amount of time. And part of that is the lag. So let me give you an example, as best I can as someone who is not a scientist. There are three data sources we're looking at. One is COVID Act Now. The other is Oakland County website. And the third one is MI.gov. And so the data, because of the lag, it may seem like we're in yellow. But then when they add in the test results, three, four, or five days later, we've had a couple bumps that are in there. I think the big takeaway is if we're looking between orange and yellow, right at that that bridge between the two, which is what we're currently at, I'm not sure that changes what we're doing as far as coming back in the hybrid model. We had a meeting this morning with Unetrix and they were very, very helpful. Thank you to Kelly for setting that up for us. They're working on creating a dashboard for us where they'll do the data dump from MI.gov, which is, as far as we can tell, the most accurate data. And they'll also make sure that we account for that lag that takes place. And then they'll add a countdown so we can see or count up how many days we've been in each. Our expectations, working with Unetrix, is we'll have that dashboard up on the district website sometime next week so that the community can go to one spot. But as far as what we're doing on a daily basis as a district, we're checking those three sites for the positive test rate and then the case rate as well, and then other sites for the additional information.
Any other questions, Jennifer? Okay, Lisa? No questions? Okay, Mark?
No.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Thanks for the update, Pat. So you can go to the phase-in plan.
So part two, updated phase-in plan. This will account for all the additional grade bands. Again, trying to make sure that we're able to have everything as far as protocols, procedures in place as we move forward. So we know we've already made the decision, September 14th. We'd have seed ARP-FRP Bloomfield come back. September 21st would be Wing Lake and kindergarten. September 24th would be grades 1 through 5. September 29th would be grades 6 through 8. And October 1st would be grades 9 through 12. We've been really busy this past week getting ready for the first day of school when it comes time to have students in person. Wide range of PPEs been delivered to classrooms and office spaces. Tents ordered and with the goal set up by 9:14. Looking at a report that came out of the University of Michigan just this morning, they're putting tents up around campus as well for students to be outside for classes or to social distance outside and have a place to be as opposed to inside. Sign is distributed throughout buildings in the bus fleet. Pre-screen configured and contact tracers identified. And HVAC systems have been checked again.
Thanks, Pat. Yep, Jennifer, questions?
I'm just curious, like, how many tents per building are we talking about? And has it been determined what or who exactly will be occupying?
So I'll let Brian Goby, if he's on, answer the tents per building. I believe it's one, except the high school might be two, but 40 by 60. But I'll let him answer. As far as who's occupying, building principals will be working with their staff to determine the best way to allocate that as a resource. A lot of teachers I've heard from are excited about the ability to go outside. And keep in mind, you don't have to have the tent to go outside. Today was a perfect example. Not too hot, not too cold. It's not raining out. You may not need that shelter. You still can go outside and have your class outside. Brian, are you on by chance? All right, so-
Brian's not on yet, but I know that Brian met with each principal. And so for the most part, it's one. I do think the high school is more. I don't have those numbers handy, but we can certainly include that in the weekly update.
If my recollection serves me right, it is 40 by 60 is the dimensions.
Jennifer, any other questions? Okay, Lisa, Jackie, do you have a clarifying or do you want to wait till we get to you, Jackie? Lisa?
Okay. My question is, from our last meeting, I thought we were going to try and phase in students to each building. I thought phase-in was going to be gradual according to the building so that we could see what the building, so before buildings were at full capacity, we could see, I mean like a test run, but you know, we could see how the flow in hallways and common areas went. It just kind of with lesser numbers in each building. When did that change?
So that changed as we looked at the numbers in the building. For example, Lone Pine, I think, you know, they would have a max of about 98 students coming in per day. When you look at Conant, Nick, you know how many students you would have coming in per day when you account for hybrid? I know you have 450, I think, in Roll, but do you remember the number that actually be walking through the door in the AM?
In the AM, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so in the AM, we're talking about, and again, these numbers change about 5, about 140 in the AM, I'm sorry, about 150 in the AM and about 140 in the PM.
Right, so we're talking about a third of the building actually coming in. Once we looked at the actual numbers for Bloomfield Virtual, that made a huge difference as far as, you know, how many students are going to be walking through the door. So like Nick said, you're looking at 150 instead of 450 at full capacity walking in, spread out through the building. Lone Pine, you're looking at about 95 to 98 walking in for the building. Adam, do you know where you're at by chance in Cary, AM and PM?
I'm really thinking about the high school and the three middle schools, but mostly the high school because that's where the biggest concentration of students are.
Right.
Phasing them in, why are we putting everybody in the building phased in at the same time?
Right, so the high school, I can talk about that. You're looking at about 1,700 or 1,800 students. That student body has been divided by one-half, so you're looking at the possibility of 900. Then we also know daily attendance rate, that's going to cut into it. And then the ability to remote it, you know, I've heard from a lot of panelists that are going to take the opportunity to remote in, especially early on and kind of see how things go. Looking at, I spent the whole day at the high school yesterday, looking at the logistics they have set up. And we'll go over that in a little bit. I feel very confident. Everything's been accounted for as far as how they're going to move students. You're looking at, you know, maybe 800 students in attendance and having four lunches. So you're looking at, you know, 200 students per lunch instead of having a capacity, depending on how see lunches at Bloomfield Hills High School, maybe 4, 5, or 600 students in it. And then having the opportunity, especially early on with the double tents outside, spreading kids out during lunch, just to have the ability for them to spread out and not just social distance at six feet, but potentially even more than that because of the amount of space that they're going to have.
All right, so just so I'm understanding, the answer is you're estimating the number will be low enough that even if they all phase in at the same time, it's significantly reduced and we can still space them out? Six feet in classrooms, hallway, one-way, okay. I just, you know, I hadn't heard when we shifted from that philosophy of doing gradual phase-in per building to everyone at the same time.
Based on the numbers and then logistics, and we'll go to logistics in a little bit and I want to thank-
I also don't know if this is the right time to bring this question up. But how many of the, or can we, maybe I need to wait for Brian to be on the phone. How many of the classrooms in the high school? I think middle school and elementary have windows that open, but the high school does not. Am I correct about that?
Charlie or someone from Charlie's team, are you on?
Yeah, we have a good number of windows that open. And as you know, too, the good thing is back in the G-Wing. Not only have those windows been replaced, but the HVAC has been upgraded back there too as well.
Lisa, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, thanks, Lisa. Mark?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Cynthia?
I'm good.
Howard?
The, so we're in our, I'm sorry, we're in yellow right now. And we're talking about all the buildings will be in hybrid. The next level from that is green. So I'm assuming green is business as usual, which is going to be obviously way down the line. So does that mean that basically until we end up with green, which is going to be probably when there's a vaccine, we're going to be in this hybrid mode of half-days and six-foot of distancing from now until we hit green?
I've been cautioned by every epidemiologist I've spoken to to not talk in absolutes. So my answer to that question is going to be every two weeks, we're going to have our board study session or meeting unless we need to meet beforehand. We're going to look at the data. We're going to look at the trends. Every 30 days, we're required by the state of Michigan to update our plan of how we're educating our students. We'll do that at that point. I don't know what the future holds. I'm just going based on the data we have right now. I know it's not probably the most straightforward answer you want, but this really is a day-by-day situation. And I know from a lot of people I've spoken to in the community, their expectation is we don't extend things out and say, in February, we're going to see where we're at. That we look at it as a district every single day and make decisions moving forward based on data that we've looked at every single day, including weekends.
Okay.
Howard, you have another question?
Yes, one more question. So every building obviously has very unique structure with, and rules that the kids are going to have to follow. Are they going to get that orientation on the first day of class? Or are we going to have like an orientation day before they walk in the building based on the timetable that you gave us to sort of just let them walk around the building and get used to the new facilities?
Last conversation I had with building administrators was they were going to send out information to the parents about what the best practices were going to be and the expectations. We did not have a conversation about getting students into the building beforehand to see what they're going to kind of go through, other than our special needs students and that will be the first week of school. I think one of the great benefits is going to be the small numbers. I know Adam Shear put in the chat, rather than having 400-plus students walk through the door on a given day, he's going to have 150 students that are going to walk through that building on a given day, which makes it a lot easier to work with the logistics and get everything done the way he needs to get it done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Howard. Jackie?
Yeah, I think this looks really solid. I like the fact that we would have the students be able to attend hybrid by October 1. I think that's pretty ambitious. But I do agree with the person from public comment that if the students are ever going to be able to have some time, and it's going to be now because we can have them outside. You know, we're not, it's not post-holidays. It's not in the winter when flu stations start. So I do, I do agree that this is a good plan. And I know that we've discussed some of the methodologies that will be used for students and for faculty. And I wanted to highlight a couple things. And that is, I know you're going to talk about the the special education and the Black Hawk Extended Care. But I just wanted to have you highlight that about the, because we've seen so much public comment on special education and the students with IEP getting their supports, their OP, their speech support, if you could highlight that. And also, there was one more thing. Also, the, I'll come to it. First highlight that and then there was something else I wanted to mention. Could you mention about the students using the tents potentially in special education for their supports?
Yeah, so you know, the tents will be available to everyone within the building, AM and PM shifts to go out there. And so again, they're 40 feet by 60 feet, so there's quite a bit of room. So it's not one of the little pop-up tents you might use at home. And then with the Black Hawk Extended Care, Jempro, and we'll get to that in a little bit in the presentation, about additional supports for our students with IEP who might need PTOT, resource room, speech, and just kind of how we're going to navigate that to make sure they get some additional supports along the way as well. And that's coming up in just a little bit.
And the other thing I wanted to highlight is the fact that there have been other districts who have gone back to hybrid or face-to-face and they've had some mistakes and you were sharing how you were in contact and you were learning from the mistakes so that as we do our phase-in plan, that we're not repeating those mistakes. Could you share about that?
Yeah, a lot of it's been really great. People have been really willing to share their successes. You know, when I talk to people in Howell and the successes they've had. And then on the west side of the state, St. and Michigan, only some of the mistakes they made along the way. One of the things that, you know, we talked about this other day with Todd Bidlack is that some of the staffs that have come back in other school districts are getting together in the lunchroom or in the teacher workstation, taking off their mask and eating within six feet. And there's been COVID that's spread that way. So you know, we want to make sure we remind our staff that the social distancing and things like that really need to be a priority. And then I will share, it's kind of anecdotal, anecdotal, is that some of the districts down south, in particular Tennessee, Mississippi, and Louisiana that have gone back, their positive test rate for their students that are in the age group of 4 to 18 has been cut almost in half since the students have returned. Again, it's anecdotal. Their health departments believe part of the reason is because students are now supervised during the day. They have a face mask on and they're six feet apart. So in their communities, they've actually seen the spread slow down instead of increased with returning to school. And there's another call with them tomorrow. Sarah Fairman will be on it because they have the Oakland County Superintendent meeting. And I'll ask Sarah to follow up with that group as well to see how their positive test rate in their communities are and to see if they're having any outbreaks. And I believe they're on days somewhere between 17 or 20 of face-to-face learning at this point. And Howell did it a little bit differently as well. They brought everyone back wearing a mask, but not the six feet. So they brought back 6,000 students and they've been in, I think, eight or nine days now. And they've been very successful.
Thanks. I thought that was really great research that you were doing and I wanted to highlight it. And then the last question I had was about the rationale. Could you just explain again the rationale of why we're bringing the lower grades back before the high school? We had a public comment on that, but I think it's good to highlight.
Yeah, a couple of different reasons. One, the governors prioritized it. You look at the American Academy of Pediatrics, they prioritize that younger group coming back as well because they need traditionally a little additional support. Again, every student's individual. You can have a sophomore in high school that needs more support than a kindergartner. And I understand that. I'm not debating that. But research does show that the older you are, the more likely you are to be successful online. Again, every student is a different case. And so knowing that, knowing what the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends, looking at where the governor is at with bringing students back or you kind of focus on that early elementary first, we've kind of gone with those guidelines as well. And we feel that with the phase-in approach, we can make sure all our procedures and protocols are in place and we can support our students coming back.
Thank you, Pat. I just want to highlight that very thoughtful and data-informed work that you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jackie. Pat, special education?
Thank you. Give me one second. President Cohen? All right, part three, special education update.
I'm sorry, Pat. Cynthia has a question.
I'm sorry.
The section before, on the phase-in dates. So I appreciate that you're finding a way to bring back all of our students as soon as possible to be face-to-face with our teachers. I guess a little bit like Lisa's question. My perception was that we would be maybe spreading. I was a little surprised that there was like three days, three or four days between each of the groups. I thought maybe it was going to be like a week. It's not like I want to spread that out more than necessary, but I thought we were going to make sure that we had everything down with one group before we did the next group. So I wondered if you could explain again the rationale for the timing being so close together between each of the groups?
Right, so let's look at the 21st, right? And we look at September 21st on the calendar, we know that's going to be a Monday. So we're bringing back kindergarten on Monday, that's the 21st and 22nd. We're talking about, in some buildings, a handful of kids own. So we can kind of see the pattern at that point and how the flow is going to be on a very, very small sample size. Then we have the Wednesday deep clean. We can refresh or do anything differently that we need to do. Then on the 24th, depending on the building, you're going to have second and third come back or second, third, and fourth come back. Again, at max capacity, you're talking about Adam Shear's building, 150 kids walking in in the AM if every single child shows up compared to 450 walking in on a regular return to school day. Looking at the plans, we have a place, looking at how small the number of students coming in, we feel that any adjustment we needed to make, we could have noticed from the 21st as we kind of went through it. And then, so that's the 24th and 25th, which gives us two days to look at that. And then coming back on the next date, the next date would be grades 6 through 8 on the 29th. We know the 28th is the holiday, so we would have had the 24th to look at to see if there's anything at the middle schools with the fourth grade or the fourth and fifth grade. And then the 26th, 27th, and 28th coming back on the 29th. We also know grades 6 through 8, they can remote in. I've talked to numerous parents that are going to remote in. I actually talked to one parent who said, "I signed up for Bloomfield Virtual for middle school. Get me out. I want my kid to be able to remote in." We had a great conversation and then it struck me all of a sudden like, you don't have to get out. You can remote in every day, you know. Teachers took care of that. You're fine. So we have parents that are going to take advantage of that. And then you've cut the building size down in half yet again. And then when you get to the high school, grades 9 through 12, you've got a building that can hold close to 2,000 students. You're looking at if every single, every single student showed up that could on one of the hybrid days, you're looking at less than 900. Then you take daily attendance and students that might be absent. And then you look at those that are going to remote in. And there are several community members that I've spoken to that feel much more comfortable remoting in. And they're just happy they get to keep their schedule. So, and also, like I said, I was at the high school yesterday and just going through their plans and looking just at organization and the details of everything that's been thought of. I'm confident that we can execute the plan extremely well. And then talking to the board president in Howell, who did 6,000 students coming back every single day from day one in their plans and then comparing them to our plans and what we're doing. I feel very confident that while they're having over 2,000 show up at their high school and doing it well, we can have 900 show up at our high school maximum and still do it well. And keep in mind, we're going to have a full staff there, right? The same amount of teachers we would have with 2,000, we're going to have with a max of 900. The same amount of hall monitors or custodians and things like that. The same amount of hall monitors or custodians and things like that, the full amount of administrators, we're going to have with a small amount. And I've seen that play out through other, you know, as, as trustee, as he was saying as well, I've seen that play out nationally for those who have brought students back. And some of the plans are our own, some we've stolen because they've got a really good idea. Also looking at Oxford, Oxford's gone back. And with their model, they've done extremely well and a lot of things we're doing are very, very similar. I think, I think it's voted really well for us to wait until September eighth. Let other people go back and to continue to learn and watch. We've all seen the viral video that came out of one Macomb County school where all the kids were basically right with each other. And so we're trying to make sure we've got things in place. That doesn't happen. I think everyone's watched the picture that ended up on Twitter out of Georgia, where there are kids with no mask, kids with a mask. Um, just hallways that are packed, kids non-stop. Also, last week and this week, stopping by the high school is great, talking to so many high school students. And they are very anxious and excited for an opportunity to come back to school. And they're not really, you know, their comment to me was, we'll wear a mask or do whatever it takes. We just want the opportunity to come back to school. We just want to be in school. So I don't think we're going to have, and I, I can be wrong, I'm wrong a lot. I don't think we're going to have a lot of students that simply don't want to wear a mask or do what we're saying. Uh, they're really anxious for those who want to return to come back to school and be in the building.
Thank you.
Thanks. Jennifer, you had a question?
Yeah, um, Pat, could you put that on the timeline slide up again, please? Um, yeah, so you know, heck, coming forward from our last meeting when we talked about tracking trends for twenty-one days, I mean, that would, that would fit with this if we stay in yellow, right? So what um, what processes, like what, what would it take to, to throw this off? Like how many, and I, I appreciate that every, the numbers we're getting aren't true to each other always within a few days because of the way that reporting works. But what, what are we looking for to, to say, okay, you know, this is gonna, we can stick to this timeline. I'm assuming that means all continuous yellow from now until then? Or what, how many days back in orange would it take to throw this off?
Great question. Um, I would definitely wouldn't say all continuous days in, in yellow. We could have a ten-point-one day, which would put us in orange and then go back down to nine-point-three for case rates. I would come to the board immediately if we start to see a couple of days in a row, three, four days where it's from eight-point-eight to ten-point-four to twelve-point-five to fifteen-point-two. That means something's happened and the epidemiologist's been really clear to look for that type of trend. But if we're still in that yellow bouncing to orange going back and forth, we would continue with the plan. Orange allows us to be in hybrid, um, you know, consider hybrid. Yellow larger allows us to consider hybrid and bringing everyone back. I don't think we're anywhere near having a conversation about bringing everyone back at this point. Nor do the epidemiologists kind of recommend it at this point. But I think we need to continue to evaluate the numbers, not just every two weeks, but to evaluate as a district daily. And so I think by having this opportunity to work with NeutrinoX and put that dashboard up, it'll give the community a spot to go to. Because the community is anxious to have those data points available to them to see. And if we get to our board meeting on September tenth, and we're talking about, we're at a positive test case rate of eight-point-five in cases per one hundred thousand or eighteen or nineteen, then we got to reconsider everything we're doing, right? We need to have that conversation. So I know there's a lot of ifs, then, thens. But based on where we're at right now and staying roughly within those same measurements, my recommendation is to continue to move forward with the plan, execute the plan. Um, I know we made the pivot to AM and PM and things like that and the buildings are hard at work. Making sure everything gets taken care of to make sure that everything's ready when the students come back.
Thanks, Pat. Anything else, Jennifer?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, Pat, special education?
Thank you, President Cohen. All right, part three, special education update, Black Hawk Extended Care. I'll turn the first part over to Jen Peron.
Good afternoon. Um, I just wanted to give the board an update on some professional development activities that have been specific to special education and social emotional learning that have taken place since the spring. Um, actually, just in the last few weeks, um, we've had three national presenters come in uh, to present to staff district-wide. Um, Jessica Minahan is a national speaker on trauma-informed teaching and practices. Uh, she came and presented to the entire administrative group in the beginning of August. And then as a follow-up to that, we've had Alex Shiven-Bannat, who is also a national speaker on trauma-informed teaching and learning as well. And she came and presented to the entire district staff in, in subsequent webinars um, with a focus on those system change and, and focus on teaching practices around working with students that have experienced trauma. And then today, um, we had a professional development with another national speaker, um, Sarah Ward, uh, whose area of focus is primarily executive functioning, although she has significant experience with a, a number of different disability areas. Um, learning disability, nonverbal learning disability, ADHD, working with students with autism. And she presented to about seventy-five of our staff today, counselors and special education staff. And um, we actually are in the process of uh, creating a contract with her and her partner and she's going to come in. Uh, together, they're going to come in and work and provide professional development to small groups of general education and special education staff district-wide. So that we can really move towards um, building that capacity around the practices as it relates to executive functioning and work to build some of those strategies and supports directly into our curriculum, both in general education classes and special education classes. And then um, during the, the period of the shutdown in the spring and then through the summer, um, all of our peer professional and instructional assistants throughout the district, um, everyone from hall monitors to staff that are in special education classrooms all participated in a series of mandated professional development in the areas of trauma-informed practices and universal strategies and supports for students. Um, some strategies and support specifically working with students with autism um, and those that have uh, similar needs. And then Project Core, which has a focus on assistive technology. Um, and so they're in the process of completing that and I believe they should all be done with their professional development by the time kids are back in school. And then finally, we're continuing our collaboration with Celebrate Hope. Um, they have continually provided over the summer months and will continue into the fall providing the bimonthly parent support gatherings for families, but they're also uh, have been providing professional development to staff as well. Um, around the areas of uh, you know, just empathy, um, working on taking care of each other, working on really focusing on how to better support parents. Um, so those are just some of the highlights of some of the PBs that have taken place since the spring. Pat, can you move on to the next one for me? And then we've added um, two new consultants to the district. Um, one is a full-time ASD consultant, Kristy Wood. Um, she has extensive experiences working with students with various uh, areas of disability, autism, emotional impairments and specific learning disabilities. She comes to us from Georgia. And she is our new full-time uh, consultant and she is hit the ground running. Um, I think she's touched base with just about every teacher in the district. She's um, been helping teachers set up classrooms. And um, she's going to be working closely with Maureen Ziegler, who is the, the next consultant that we've hired in the district. Um, for those of you who've not heard of Maureen before, uh, she comes to us um, from the START program, uh, which was generated through Grand Valley State University about twenty years ago. Um, and so she has been um, at both a national and state presenter um, specific to working with students with autism, but uh, the strategies that they work on and present are very universal strategies that can be helpful for any student. Um, generally or special education, but one of her primary focuses is the development of the peer-to-peer support programs called LINKS. And so we actually were in the process of initiating that program uh, into the high school this fall. And so our goal is, um, we have Maureen for a short period of time. Uh, she's coming out of retirement to come work with us for a couple of years uh, on a very part-time basis. But uh, between Maureen and Kristy, they're going to work really hard on, on really building our capacity around supporting students, learning about universal strategies and really trying to focus on getting those peer-to-peer support programs up and running in the district. And then as was mentioned earlier, um, we are moving forward with a program called Black Hawk Extended Care that will be specific for students with IEPs. Um, so this support was put in place um, with the thinking that as we're moving into our hybrid programming for students with AM and PM, looking for a way to provide support as it relates to their special education supports without taking away from their instructional time in general education. And so with the extended care, um, it will be primarily for students with IEPs and they'll have the ability to access their remote learning in their general education classes from the extended care rooms. But at the same time, they can also receive their other supports that are written into their IEP, whether it be resource room or their ancillary support such as speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, social work. Um, resource room supports may also be provided during this time, but may also be provided during uh, the time that they're in person in their general education classes. As sometimes it's important for the teachers to go into those classrooms and work with the students with the general education uh, teachers as well. So that will be very individualized for students. The oversight for the program will be provided by latchkey staff. Um, we're going to work hard and make every effort to limit the interactions with the alternate cohorts of students. Lunch and recess will take place during that period of time between the AM and PM cohorts. Students can bring a lunch or purchase a lunch uh, that will be available. Um, we're also looking at um, having students bring water bottles and using water bottle filling versus drinking fountains. Um, and this will be limited uh, for students with IEPs, kindergarten through fifth grade, and that will be four days a week. Uh, and students with IEPs, sixth through eighth, um, two days a week.
And then daycare opportunities, um, we're still looking at what we might be able to do. Uh, but a couple of different suggestions we've had as far as next door babysitters or published information there. Um, we've set up something with Franklin Athletic Club, which will give discount to uh, Bloomfield Hills residents. Uh, may not be licensed, uh, but they are providing that opportunity. Metro Parent and Other Family websites to find both licensed and non-licensed program. Uh, one thing that we're having a difficult time with right now is staffing when it comes to latchkey in that area. We're working on finding more positions. We'll have, we'll know more once we see how many students with an IEP need the Black Hawk Extended Care to see if there's going to be any additional opportunities. But the thought is, uh, we need to make sure we provide some additional support for our students with an IEP moving forward. President Cohen?
Okay, um, I'm first. Um, so Jennifer, so this, the extended care, so students with IEPs. So for the time period, let's just say when everyone's remote, effective nine-eight, will students with IEPs have the opportunity to get um, those services entitled to them in a live setting in our open buildings? Um, from nine-eight to whenever they go back hybrid?
So the first week, nine-eight, um, is remote for all teachers. Um, we're not providing any in-person instruction. We have staff that are um, receiving training that week and they're really working to set up their classrooms to make them conducive to come back for the students and working on a lot of transition activities those weeks. Um, individually to bring the students back into, um, particularly in the self-contained environments, breaking those kids back to what will be a very different learning environment for them. And then um, the following week is when we're phasing, uh, when we will be bringing students back face-to-face for the self-contained programs. And then the Black Hawk Extended Care, that will be something that will be phased in as the grade levels are phased in, as it relates to that support.
So I, I guess I'll ask the question differently. So from, so if I, if there are students that have an IEP and while they're remote, until they get phased back in, you know, let's just say K through five, whatever happens, the, you know, best case scenario would be nine-twenty-four. From nine-eight to nine-twenty-four, they're entitled to, whether it's physical therapy, occupational therapy, resource, pull-out. Um, are, are they going to be able to do that in a live building with one of our paraprofessionals or resource room teachers from that time period?
So.
And if, and if, and if the answer is no, what, why, why can't we?
So the plan at this time is to phase in those supports and they would be doing remote instruction during that time. Um, there are certain situations and we've asked staff to reach out to families um, to talk to them individually about students that they do know will require some level of face-to-face in the interim. And they are making those arrangements on an individual basis.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mark?
No questions right now.
Hey, Lisa?
Um, all right. My question is um, maybe a general one, but if students are coming back into the building the week, um, the week following September eighth, September fourteenth. Can, what, can you give us an update? What, I guess I don't understand why we're not, um, we won't have in-person nurses like we were promised.
That's the question unfortunately I can't answer. That was, you know, the nurses were provided by Oakland schools. And you know, they will come into the buildings as far as a walkthrough and things like that, and they've been great. Uh, they've done everything we've asked of them so far. They've attended every meeting. They're giving great feedback. They're both also parents in the community with students in our school districts, so they're very vested. But that's the way the program was set up. They're not our employees. Um, we don't have authority really over them. And so I, I can't mandate that they show up at a building every day and assist if a student gets sick.
No, but other districts in Oakland County are having in-person nurses.
So are you asking why we haven't?
Yeah.
Got our own nurse?
Well, I'm asking if we have students in the building, I can see for a remote that it would make not a lot of sense to have nurses in the building, but I really, uh, I, I think if we're pulling on all the stops and getting students back in as quickly as possible, I, I can think of hundreds of good uses for having nurses in the building.
So that is not something that we've looked at as far as putting a nurse in contracting with the nerds in every single building.
Well, we have a free nurse, two free nurses from Oakland County, Oakland County. How do we, how, how did other districts get their nurses to come in person? Can't we do what they did?
I will definitely, there's a Oakland County Superintendent's meeting tomorrow. I will find out who actually has a super, or what superintendent actually has someone showing up to Oakland County in person. And then I'll figure it out at that point. I haven't heard of any that are coming in person, but I'll find out.
Okay, I, that, that was my general question. And I, I guess I'm thinking, um, as soon as we start phasing students in, it, it would really be nice to have uh, you know, nurses in the buildings where the students are going to be.
Thank you.
Okay, is any other questions? Uh, Jennifer?
Okay, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around the logistics here. So between the fourteenth and whatever the one through five phase-in date is, the twenty-fourth, um, the self-contained rooms will be attending and on an individual basis will be attending in person. Is that for the whole day or is that also going to work in, in a fifty-fifty hybrid plan? And then sort of the same question, say, say we're phasing in and we go to the Black Hawk Extended Care. I'm, I'm not quite clear on whether that means that the students with IEPs are there all day and are getting instruction all day, or whether they're there all day and are getting, having school half the day and care half the day, or, or whether it's operating completely hybrid like the general ed population.
So let's take the IEP question number two first. You have a third grader that has an IEP. Um, they attend Way Elementary School. Uh, the parent would have the opportunity and they're in the PM shift, right? They're in the PM class. The parent would have the opportunity for those four days during the week, they have their child attend in the morning for Black Hawk Extended Care, where they could access their remote learning during that time, their asynchronous work at that time. And then if that child needed speech or PT or OT, they could be taken out during that time. And then in the afternoon, that child would attend the in-person session with their parent. So it's a way to provide additional support for our students with an IEP. And with the, you know, doing our best to make sure we're not pulling them out during direct instruction or core instruction time. And with the, you know, doing our best to make sure we're not pulling them out during direct instruction or core instruction time. Instead pulling them out when they would be asynchronous or at home and providing that support. It'd be a latchkey professional that would be in the room with them and not a teacher, but it is a full school setting. And would give them the opportunity to be there on a full day. The parent might decide that their child's IEP is not something I'm interested in. Or they might decide two days out of the week, it makes sense for my child based on the two days we're going to have speech, the other two days will stay home. But really, you know, the way Jennifer and her staff was approached of this. How do we provide the greatest opportunity for our students with an IEP? We get some additional supports outside of their AM or PM rotation and shift. And be in the building and be in the educational setting. So logistically, there are unbelievable amount of moving pieces at the granular level that we put together. With food service and everyone else. And keep in mind, we still feel confident. We can make sure we do the proper social distancing and not have close contact and, you know, that's within six feet for fifteen minutes. And keep in mind, it's not fifteen minutes in a row. It's fifteen minutes over a period of time. So Mark and I work in the same office building. And I see him face to face for three minutes here, two minutes there, five minutes here, one minute there, two minutes there, seven minutes there. We've been in close contact because we've been together within six feet for fifteen minutes. And so we're very cognizant of that and, you know, the building principals have spent a lot of time working with Jen and her team. And Lisa Gerlach has spent hours upon hours making sure that we can. Logistically and appropriately manage the situation. And we've broken it down by IEP students per building, K through five, six through eight, what their needs are going to be, what rooms we can use. How we're going to clean in between sessions. How we can do lunch outdoors and make sure they're spread out even outdoors. And so. We felt strongly that this is the best way to provide additional supports for students with an IEP.
Any other question? I don't know if Pat froze or. I think Pat froze. Jennifer, do you have a question for Jennifer Perron? Oh, Pat's back, okay.
No, I'm just, my, my other question about the interim situation where between the fourteenth and the twenty-fourth. Is that totally, is that just being handled under self-contained rooms are doing what Pat just described? But otherwise each family makes its own arrangements with, with the school? Is that how that's working?
As far as students with the IEP will still try to accommodate and meet all the expectations, their IEP virtually. And like we attempted to do in the spring as well, so that's still the goal. But they will not be coming back into the building until their phase in date. We were very cognizant of not having stragglers come in here, two kids here, a kid there, and logistically not being prepared. And so, you know, the question from Lisa, trustee Afros and trustee Von Neuen. How do we get to the point where we phased up the dates? A couple of different reasons. The main reason is logistically, we looked at what we think we're able to do. We looked at what other schools are doing that's working well. We looked at what other school districts are doing that's not working well. And we know that we wanted to make sure that we got some additional support. You know, I had numerous conversations, including two weekends ago with Jen Perron. On a Sunday where she was beyond passionate about, we need to get the IEP students in the building more. Something has to happen. And, you know, she kept, and I give her a lot of credit, she was beyond passionate about, they need to be in the building. We need to find a way. To get them in, to get their services, even if it means they're going to be there for a full day. But within that phased in timeline. So if you're a third grader, when one through five comes back, you're there. It's, it's a tight timeline. Is it doable? Yes. Again, I look at the other districts that have brought back thousands of students compared to what we're bringing back and have done it well. And, you know, the parent community, I feel those who want to come back are very supportive. Their children aren't going to wear a mask. They're anxious to have their students come back. Talking to some of my colleagues that are in the private school, their students are back. They're following the protocols. They're doing what they're supposed to be doing because they're excited and they want to be back. And they're taking a lot of pride in being back and doing it right so they can stay back.
Thanks. Anything else, Jennifer? We can, we can go back to if you have more questions. Jackie?
Yeah, I had a question. Lisa mentioned nurses, but I wanted to be a little bit more broad. Was there anything, Jennifer, that you really feel if we just had blank or we just had something, is there something that? Is, is. Is pressing that you find would really make a difference because we. You know, my grandma was special education teacher her whole life and, and got it. And there is a name, there's a school named after her and, and I, I. You know, some of my earliest memories are with her special education classes and, and I know how important it is. For these students because. They just do have a tendency to regress. Without proper support. So is there anything that? That we should be doing that we're not doing? I mean, I'm really impressed with the, when Pat shared with me how you're going to provide the. The support and the two phases, the, sorry, the, the morning and afternoon manner and the way that you've worked it out. But is there anything that you feel like, wow, there's just. There's something that would really make a difference to our students. I know besides getting rid of COVID, which we all want. Right? But that, that we. That we could be doing for our students with special needs?
Thank you, Jackie. Yes, you took the words out of my mouth. I was going to say a vaccine.
Yeah.
That would be absolutely ideal. It's just tough. I mean, if we had double the staff, right, to be able to bring everybody back full time, that would be fantastic. And then lots and lots of space to spread them out to do it. You know, and so, you know, those are the, those are all of the, the things that we tossed around and talked about and discussed about how do we make that work? You know, as it is, we're, we're. In my opinion, stretching staff, especially our special education staff when we're asking to do both remote and in-person. Work for students for those that have opted to remain virtual. And so we're navigating some of those nuances and. So I think that what we've created with the extended care at least gives students the opportunity. To receive their services in a separate environment and not have to be pulled out separately out of their general education classes to get support. And allows the staff that flexibility so they don't feel like they have to crunch all of those students' times and services in a day period. And so I, you know, in, in the regard of working with the students that do have the resource room support. Who will not be in the self-contained classrooms that will be there more often throughout the day. I think that it allows the best flexibility given our current circumstances and staffing.
Okay, great. Thank you. I, but I, I want to tell you something is that today I talked to one of my former students. And he is a senior scientist at Pfizer and guess what he's doing? Working on the vaccine, right? And so night and day working on the vaccine. So, yeah. Yeah, so hopefully he'll be successful.
Yeah, fingers crossed, fingers crossed.
Thanks, Jackie. Howard?
No questions at this point.
Cynthia? And then I know Jennifer, you had another question.
Well, just to follow up on, on Jackie's last question. So. Jennifer, I know you have a wide network of special ed directors across the region and across the nation. You know, as you look around at what you see as best practices, you feel like we've been able to do everything possible for our students?
I, I do Cynthia. When you look around at just even our neighboring districts, we're doing significantly more in comparative, in comparison to our neighbors. You know, most in the county are starting remote at all levels and not offering any in-person services. For students with IEPs. Some of them are doing gradual starts, but they're starting gradually as they're phasing in their general education. That's when they're phasing in their special education. So I feel like we're, we're doing the best that we can in the circum, given the circumstances that we're working with. And making sure we're keeping safety as the top priority. It's tough. It's definitely been tough.
Right, thank you.
I have a quick question then, then Jennifer. I know you had a question. Is the Black Hawk care, is there a cost to that or is that free?
It said no cost.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Jennifer? Jennifer?
Yep, sorry, I'm having mouth problems. Jennifer, you, when you just said about staffing, it just, it just prompted me to think, ask. Regarding our paraprofessionals and not, not just for special ed, but more generally. Has there been any shifting of the utilization of perez in general into. Different roles so that they can best support teachers in, in both the special ed and the gen ed settings?
So I can't speak to all of the shifting. Kelly might need to jump in. Sorry, Kelly, I don't mean to put you on the spot as it relates to that. But, you know, what we, what we have shared and what we have certainly explored is that if we need to shift staff. You know, we've certainly spoken to building principals about the possibility of that needing to happen. And I think some of that we just won't know until. We have, we have people in the building and, and we, and we figure things out. But I know that Kelly has sent out a couple of communications and, and has, you know, shared. That, you know, there might be the necessity to, to shift people in terms of what their responsibilities are.
Or even while we're still online, you know, like can perez be mobilized for. You know, just to make small group learning easier?
Yes, yeah. So that is happening. They, they are working with both their general education teachers and their special education teachers. In supporting them and being able to work with the teachers to do breakout rooms and those types of activities. So yes, for sure. And if I can just advocate for one more thing to Jackie's point about if I could wish for anything. I'd wish for more funding from the state and federal government for special education.
Yeah, we all do. So important.
Thanks. Jennifer, any other questions with that? Pat? Next section?
Thank you, President Cohen. Part four, building entry and exit plans. This is going to be a high level overview. Just to try to give you a glimpse into what we're looking at doing. So self-screening, we're really, we really need to lean on our parents and count on them for their support in this. We need to make sure, we've talked about this multiple times. That we're getting the self-screening done and we'll be sending out reminders to the parents, the, you know, the morning of and things like that. But it's important, if your child doesn't feel well, please don't allow them to come to school. Please keep them home. Consoito cleaning, we've touched on this several times now. All requirements for the MI Safe Start Cleaning Plan will be satisfied. Cleaning all frequently touched surfaces at least every four hours, disinfecting all areas every four hours. Temporary addition of extra consolos staff to ensure that all necessary cleaning activities are accomplished throughout the school day. And kudos to Brian Govey and his team working with EnviroClean to make sure that got done. Introduction Clorox three sixty machines, making sure everything we're using is EPA and CDC compliant. And just to increase frequency of all cleaning activities related to disinfecting of touch points and other surfaces. Will be going on throughout the day. Again, we've touched on this quite a few times. Signage plans, signage plans. Elementary school, middle school, high school will have the signs up reminding people that they need to social distance. We'll have the little cues on the floor. There'll be hand sign, hand sanitizing stations that are spread out through the buildings. Good hygiene, you know, habits and things like that will all be part of the program. Each building is going to have a quarantine room. It will be remote secluded. It will be no smaller than one hundred square feet to serve as isolation area. This room is going to be outfitted with an appropriate face shield, mask, glove and sanitizing wipes. That's for the student who doesn't feel well during the day and that's part of the return to school plan as well. Entry and exit points, K through eight. Elementary and middle school will have access to schools will be limited to students and staff. Hand sanitizers stations at each entrance. Staff will supervise bus arrival and dismissal and family pickup and drop off. Monitoring enforcement of wearing a mask. Masks will be available for anyone needing one. Again, part of that granular detail was making sure we got individually wrapped masks. And making sure we got them in adult and youth sizes. Again, how do we guarantee that the mask we're giving a student isn't soiled? Well, we're making sure we're doing that by not buying a bulk in a big package where someone's reaching their hand in, but they're individually wrapped. Entering the building, students will report directly to their classroom. Building will open to students five to 10 minutes before school. Buses will keep students on the bus until 10 minutes before school starts. Exiting the building, exiting done in a staggering rotation. Students will be released in small cohorts. Example of some of the specific buildings. Bloomfield's Middle School coming in through the main entrance as far as adjacent to the cafeteria. Bus drop off and arrival, at arrival and pickup and dismissal. Main entrance adjacent to the gym, rear console entrance will be staff only, athletics will be staff only. Again, looking at West Hills, looking at East Hills, because each building is a little different, each configuration is a little different. They've come up with a plan that they will share out with the community as far as how they're going to enter and exit the building. Again, just trying to give a high level overview of the things we've been working on. Entry and exits nine through twelve, looking at Bloomfield Hills High School and IA. Again, access to school will be limited to students and staff only. Reminders will be sent out to complete the self screener. Students and staff are wearing face masks. We know K through twelve. Pre-K through twelve, everyone's wearing a face mask, hand sanitizing stations. A report from self screener will be generated in the office, followed with students as necessary. Bowers, students will report directly to their classroom. Access to the academy will be limited to students and staff only. Again, doing the cell of screener, students and staff. Face mask, entry, specific. Protocols of Wing Lake. Again, access to school will be limited to students and Bloomfield staff only. Hand sanitizer dismissal from the bus loop for rooms three, five, seven, nine, eleven and fifteen. Main lobby door for room six, eight, ten, twelve and fourteen. Equipment will be wiped down prior to students being handed over to Wing Lake staff in the morning. And the resident district bus staff at the end of the day. As we anticipate more, parents will be driving students to and from school. Buses will use the loop closest to the building. Parents will use the second line. Staff will continue to go to buses, cars to pick up students. Hallway traffic, general protocols, again, high level overview, six through twelve. Staff will supervise hallways. Staff will escort students to locations, including outdoor areas. Grade level, specific hallways will be designated, avoid an exposure to the full building. Movement will be based on grade level. Student movement will follow a two-way lane pattern, stay right and social distance. Kind of like driving, maintain your following distance and don't run into anyone. Certain office and spaces, stop and wait for assistance before entering. There will be queues there for students. And age-appropriate signage throughout the building to serve as visual queue, visual cues. So things on the floors, things on the walls. Looking at elementary school, hallway traffic will be limited traveling to bathroom or the office. Middle school locker use likely not with the start of the year. But we know we've had conversations and we'll explore ways to assign lockers to distance students to use as a space. And sort their jackets and other colder weather gear. Again, with students coming back in a hybrid fashion and spread out. We want to maintain that six feet of social distancing and making sure they're not in close contact. Bowers breakout rooms will be limited to one student. Outdoor learning spaces will be utilized whenever possible. At IA, use of outdoor passes ways to reduce hallway congestion. Classroom protocols, all grades, regular reminders to wash, sanitize hands. After re-entering a room for any reason during instruction. Explicit safety practices taught, staff modeling best practices. There, there is a way to wash your hands properly. I think we've all kind of seen those videos or read the reports on the proper way to do it. So time spent in class reviewing hand washing and other practices. We wear masks to show we care for our school community. We social distance to show we care. We wear masks to show we care for our school community, we social distance to show we care. Use of videos and social media to demonstrate ways to be safe, student centered and employ ways to be student centered. Uh, classroom configuration, assigned seats so that they're socially distanced. And individualizing supplies, uh, shared materials and supplies, toys and books will, uh, will be wiped down at the end of the day. And if it is something that is shared for a short period of time, then hand washing will take place immediately after. Wing Lake, uh, students and staff will have access to two classroom spaces daily. Students will utilize the bathroom within the two spaces. As the SCI classrooms have desk tables in the rooms, the gym will be available via schedule for rooms eight, 10, 12 and 14 to provide movement opportunities. Uh, playground will be scheduled, playground schedule will be developed for the building, the equipment will be wiped down before and after each, uh, each use. Entry and exit to the playground, classroom doors leading to the playground for room six, eight, 10, 12 and 14. And then the main lobby doors will be used for rooms three, five, seven, nine, 11 and 15. So BHHS and IA, uh, surfaces during each class or after leaving and re-entering, students will wipe down the work surfaces in the chair moving forward. Bathroom protocols for all grades, signage with safety protocols posted, assigned by grade level and limit the number of students in the bathroom. At the middle school, again, assigned by grade level, limit the number of students in the bathroom in a classroom-based pass system. At the high school, staff will be positioned at each restroom during passing time. We will limit the number of students in the bathroom at any given time. At Wing Lake, no two classrooms will share a bathroom. Only two students and necessary staff will be in the bathroom at a time versus four students on a pre-pandemic day. All PPE and cleaning protocols will be followed. Elementary, all in-use restrooms will be clean in between AM and PM sessions. Will be fully disinfected using NPA endless disinfectant. Soap, paper towel, sanitizer will all be replenished between the two sessions. Amount of in-use restrooms will be reduced where appropriate. Um, it will be determined but between the physical plant services and building administrators, and I know uh, Mr. Goby is working with building admin on that, will allow for adequate time for all used restrooms to be fully cleaned. We allow for additional cleaning tasks to be performed by both daytime and afternoon custodial staff. And proper hand washing signage will be posted in all restrooms. Meal and lunch protocols, uh, students will be able to preorder lunch. BHHS will move to four lunches in order to spread out more. All food will be prepackaged, grab and go only. Wing Lake, breakfast and lunch will be delivered to the classroom by food service and program aides. Staff will continue to follow all safety procedures for feeding students. Staff will utilize PPE such as gloves, masks, face shields and gowns when assisting students during mealtimes. Students will be physically distanced from one another.
Thank you, Pat. Yeah, thank you, Pat. Um, we'll go Jackie, do you have any questions?
Yeah, um, um, I, you covered the signage, I think that's great that you're gonna have the, um, the signage on the floor. I know that like sometimes they even have circles and things that you sit here and, you know, help some visualize, younger kids visualize, even older kids and adults visualize how well, how far they, how, um, far apart they should be. So I think that, that is, I had a question on two things. In the bathroom, will there be wipes or anything at the entrance? You know, I know they'll be wiped down and stuff, but I'm thinking the kids are gonna touch the doorknob, you know, we're not supposed to do that anyway, right? So, uh, wash our hands and you're not supposed to touch the door and then, you know, those things. Will there be any kind of wipes or anything for them to use when they're doing that? And then garbage cans for them to throw it away or whatever?
So the goal is for them to wash their hands and then they leave. And part of the procedures that we're looking at is anytime a student leaves your room and walks back in, if it's a classroom where there's not a sink, they should use hand sanitizer. If it's a classroom where there is a sink, they should wash their hand again. Cause we know, and we've all had children, and I know I've asked my own children before, did you wash your hands? Oh yeah, I washed my hand and I'm outside the door and the sink never came on. Like, I, I know you didn't wash your hands, not that any other parent has retired like my three. But that will be part of the protocols that, you know, you know, hi, trustee Fros, welcome back to the class. You're a senior, I know you're 18 and you can vote and you're got a four-point gazillion, but I need you to use the hand sanitizer on your hands. I washed my hands. That's great. I don't want to smell them. I can see the wet. Please use the hand sanitizer. And I don't, I don't foresee base, especially with the older kids, really any pushback on following any of this. They're, they're anxious to go back to school, those that are looking to return. And so I've really, the parents of the younger children, I'm confident they're going to tell their kids, hey, you're back in school, this is great, this is what you want. Make sure you follow all the rules and wash your hands and do these things so we can keep going to school. I mean, that's kind of been the rallying cry out and howl is they want to show everyone you can go back to school and, and do it the right way. And we want to be safe, we want to be cautious, we've done our due diligence. Um, I would put our research and time spent researching up against anyone else in the country. And we've talked to everyone in the country and, you know, it's still, there's still not a great plan, right? As a parent of three myself, I'm still not getting what I want, which is a way for everyone to come back full-time safely the way it used to be. And there's still going to be that frustration and about a month ago at the board meeting, I talked about the reality that I'm facing as a parent and realizing that it really is truly going to be different this year. But we want to make sure we provide the opportunity for parents to have that choice. If you want to come back, here's how we're coming back, here's how we're measuring, you know, the metrics that we're using. Here's what we're doing to provide PPE and things like that for staff. So are there things that potentially we forgot? Absolutely. You can't think of absolutely everything. Uh, but I'm confident that we hit most of the items that we need to hit. And again, like you brought up earlier, by talking to so many other districts that have been back, others in Michigan, United States or internationally, and picking up tidbits from them. A great example is the individual wrap mask. So many people that went back early international had the bulk ones. And there was no way to guarantee they weren't soiled as people reached their hands in and touched more than one. It's like watching your kids, like you analogy, watch your kids take out the bread in a brand new loaf. They want the pieces more in the middle because they're softer and they're larger size. So they're kind of putting their DNA over all the other bread that could grow something there. Well, by having an individual wrap mask, we don't have to worry about. So we really did spend a lot of time looking at the details and I'm really proud to be a part of this team and a part of a community that's so passionate about education and about what we're doing. And I know we had a seven-hour board meeting not too long ago and there's all kinds of interesting things during that time. And my big takeaway was that everyone's passionate. Everyone's passionate about education. Everyone cares. And I'd much rather be in a community that is passionate and cares about what's going on than that doesn't care.
I agree, and I think that's why people move here. I have another question. Uh, I know that you're very involved with Student Voice. And I was wondering if you had any thoughts to how perhaps students could give, um, you know, somehow perhaps even anonymously at times, give, uh, suggestions or showcase or like surface issues that they're seeing. Um, so that the staff at the buildings could rapidly, um, you know, fix it or take their suggestions in some way. Um, seems like they're gonna be, you know, like the, the kids down south where they're taking pictures. You know, we don't want, we want them to be able to ju, we'd love it if they could just say, this is what's happening, but some, some kids might not be feel comfortable. So maybe, um, having some type of a portal for students or something to highlight these things so you could address it. Do you, did you put any thought to that?
Yes. One of the things we talked about was having a survey for students as we kind of reintroduce them or face them back into school so that they can share what's working well, what's not working well. And I know we could set that up, uh, to be anonymous as well. So that's something that we brought up a couple of board meetings ago that we would continue with to get that feedback. And I'm really liking right now, to be honest, uh, the students that are freely emailing me suggestions now, uh, which is really, really great. And, you know, I want to make it, now everyone's going to feel comfortable doing that, right? Um, and I get that. So we would definitely follow through and having those surveys. We know at the elementary level, it would require a parent to assist the student to say what's working well, what's not working well, we may not get the feedback we need. Another thing is going to be our teachers and them sharing, you know what? We thought this was going to be a good way to do whatever this is. It's not working, here are some different ways, we need to adjust. We're going to have to be nimble and move on our feet. We can't be a typical educational institution and take forever to pivot and make a change when we see things that may not be working when we go back. We need to look at it from a business perspective is, okay, that was plan A. That part as far as going out these four doors is not working, so now we need to change it for tomorrow. Now, two people or classes are going out those doors, the other classes are going out the front door within the building. One group's turning left, one group's doing right, going this way, exiting this way and coming back. And that's something we've looked at, you know, when we talked to people from Denmark, that was a big part of their model. Making sure you identify doors, students came in and out of at all times. And so we've done that, well, I have it, the building administrators have done that. To make sure, and you can see even with Wing Lake, based on the room numbers. There's a way you come in based on your room number, there's a way you come out, even though you wouldn't be in close contact, just trying to keep that spread so that we have people that are spread out.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jackie. Jennifer?
Uh, yeah, um, building on what Jackie said, that's an excellent point. In, in laboratory medicine, we call them improvement opportunity forms. And it's basically a pe, little piece of scrap paper at various points around the building where when something comes to you, because you see an inefficiency, um, you can record it and, and if you have any suggestions. So I don't, I don't know that a paper suggestion box is a good idea germ-wise, crowding and, you know, kids are so electronically motivated. Maybe we could possibly, if we could design a, a, a simple portal where the students could enter in suggestions if they have them, I think that would be marvelous. Um, my question is about the self-screening, um, thing, because I am, I'm just trying to in picture how this works and, and so that it hopefully would never create a backlog at the, at any entrance. Um, so what, what is the gateway of processing those where and who? And for those who have paper ones, um, what, because they're young enough, they don't have a device or they, they don't have a device. Um, how, how is that gonna work?
So even if they don't have a device, the parents still can do the self-screening. So there'll be a reminder that comes to you, you know, we're looking at doing it the first three weeks that, you know, trustee cook, you need to make sure you do the self screener for your child. And then there'll be a reminder in the morning, you need to do the self screener. And then we'll have a date, 20 or time roughly 20 minutes to a half an hour before school starts to remind you yet again, hey, you need to do the screener. And then we'll have the list of students that do not, um, if any, don't complete it. But really, we need to rely on our community. We really need the community's support to get this done. We need to use every ounce of time we have available for instruction and not trying to chase students down and figure out, you know, the five or eight or 10 questions, uh, do you have a headache? Do you have this? Did you have, felt nauseous in the past hour? So that's really going to be where we need the community to help us out and really support us by getting this done.
So, so maybe I'm misunderstanding it, it, when they fill out this screener electronically, does it go somewhere? Because at band camp, the students fill it out.
It does.
They had to show it to, to an adult and, and walk past them. So will that be more automated?
It will be more audit, automated, there'll be a bachelor list that goes to each building with all those that have been approved. We've also changed some of the language because some students were not reading all the way through that are involved in extracurriculars and getting the faults or the red saying they couldn't come in because they answered a question a certain way. So we changed the verbiage on that to make it more clear.
Okay, so, so the only person-to-person interaction with these is if the student has a paper form and then to somebody. Okay.
Correct. So what, again, for those of you watching in the community, we know your kindergarten doesn't have a cell phone, like when we, they might have a cell phone. If they do, they probably shouldn't be bringing it to school, that's a different story. We need your help. Please do the screener, we'll send you the reminders, we need to get it done. It's really, really important. Uh, we want to make sure that those that are in Bloomfield Virtual, we take great care of. We provide what they need. We also want to take care of those who want to come back face to face. And if you're a parent, we can't do it without your help. So I'm pleading, I'm begging, please, we need to do this as a community. Please fill out the screener, please, if your child doesn't feel well, keep them home for the day until the symptoms are gone. We have to do this together. And if we do it together and we do it right, we have a great opportunity to allow our students who choose or want to come back to in-person learning, the opportunity to come back face to face.
Thanks, Pat. Lisa?
My first question is about the, um, um, the quarantine room. I, I'm trying to envision, um, a room where, what, okay, first, what happens if there's more than one child who we suspect, um, may have symptoms? Is it safe to quarantine them in the same room until we know what they have? And then second, what about elementary school students? Are, are they quarantined in a room for how long until a parent gets them? Maybe it's hours without adult supervision?
So a couple of things. Now, we wouldn't quarantine, you know, more than one student in the room. So we'll have backup locations throughout the building. And one of the key things is remember, A, they're wearing a mask and B, we need to make sure people aren't within six feet of them, you know, for an extended period of time. There will be adult supervision. So let's say you walk into an elementary building and whatever, this area is a quarantine room. There will be an adult that will be outside the room that can still see and supervise the child, but making sure they're more than six feet apart and they're wearing a mask as well. How soon can parents get there? It depends on the parent, right? They work downtown, it might be an hour if they're, there, there's, there's no other option. Again, remember, if they're in the, if they're in the quarantine room, it doesn't mean they have COVID.
No, it does mean they're sitting in a room with no way to get in or out and no other interaction for what could be hours on end. And they'll be five years old.
True. So, so if it wasn't a pandemic, they'd be sitting in the office. So there's still going to be an area, they still can visibly see an adult. And yeah, it would be a bummer for a five-year-old to have to sit three hours. Well, the max would be two and a half, right? Because it's a half day. So the absolute max would be a two and a half they sit there. Is it a long time? Absolutely.
Second question, um, I have read about, um, other districts taking, I, I guess I'm confused as to what we're calling, um, what we're now calling positive cases. Because I know that the tests aren't necessarily as reliable as we once thought that they were. However, um, y, you know, if we're going by symptoms more than by positive test, my question is, what, uh, what tools do we have in each building to be able to detect temperature for one? Um, are, are we gonna have, uh, scanning thermometers? I, I had read about Detroit Public Schools with the, uh, 17-second turnaround time rapid. Everybody entering a building gets their temperature taken. I know we're not doing that. But what are we using to take temperatures? Are we using the same device at all the buildings? What, how reliable of a, of a temperature-taking device is it? And how far can we be from the student taking the temperature?
Right. So we do have those temperature, you know, thermometers we can use. And, you know, it's not the old-fashioned ones where you put in the mouth, the mercury and things like that. You do have to be within six feet, but you're not going to be within six feet for 15 minutes. And my biggest concern from talking to epidemiologists are the asymptomatic people. That is my biggest concern in this age group, and that's what they're telling me to be cognizant of. And I'm asking them, well, what do I do? And then they said, you've already made the adjustment. You, you're keeping kids six feet apart in the classroom, you've got everyone wearing a mask. That is the most important thing you can do in stopping the spread. Um, so buildings, each building has more than one thermometer, uh, that they can use. Again, the temperature is just one symptom of what could be many, many things. And if we come across that student that has a temperature, yes, we will be sending them home after they get out of the quarantine room, which hopefully won't be the two and a half hours.
Okay. Um, Mark?
Great job in staying on top of things, great job moving things forward. So thank you very much.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Cynthia?
Yeah, I have a couple. So just to follow up on one of the questions in our public comment this evening was regarding the safety of the chemicals being used in the buildings for our children. There was a, the parent concern was regarding, are, you know, are we, are we using chemicals that may be poisonous to children? And that, what is EPA and disinfectant?
EPA and CDC compliant. Brian, if you're on now, if you want to talk about it specifically, I'm not sure, I know he's been tied up all day. Nope, okay, but no. What we're using is EPA and CDC compliant.
And so it's, it's safe to be around children?
Correct.
You also mentioned that at the high school, that our students will be responsible for wiping down their dust and chairs. So are we have a huge supply of disinfecting wipes that are going to be used every time a student goes from one place to the next?
We've got quite a horde. Kudos to Tina and Brian and that whole team that was working together to get PPE. We're very, very fortunate in the supply that we have. And yeah, we, we have quite a bit of everything right now.
That's impressive, it's a precious quantity, commodity, you may need an armed guard to protect it.
Yeah, no kidding, I can put it on eBay.
So just to follow up on Lisa's question about the quarantine room and, and, and nurses. So that prompts me to ask, so if we have a student who's coming into one of our offices not feeling well, who's responsible for, for reading those concerns, taking the temperature, et cetera, et cetera? Is anybody, anybody who's in the office space?
So I'll turn it over to Kelly at this time. I know we've talked about a couple of different ways to do it. And then I'll also turn it over to Nick Russo after that, can talk more about what we're using as far as cleaning.
Yes, thank you. So, so there's a number of options that we have for, for utilizing staff in buildings. Our nurses are going to be asked to train the staff identified to support the quarantine. Because there's two nurses supporting the district, we want to make sure we have building-level support. So they'll receive the training, they need to be able to tend to students in the quarantine room safely, still reduce the risk of transmission. We're also having conversations with the township. Bloomfield Township might have some support available to us as well if need be. So we're working through those things, but we're going to identify specific people, make sure they're comfortable, confident, willing to do the work. And then they'll be trained to do it and provided some additional level of personal protective equipment as well.
So like a couple of people in each office space, so that it's always somebody available?
Yeah, we, we are doing the best we can. In fact, this might lend itself also to respond to trustee Cook's question to Ms. Peron earlier. You know, we, we are maintaining full staff in our buildings while bringing in 50% essentially of what isn't enrolled in Bloomfield Virtual. So our student occupancy levels are going to be quite a bit lower. So if you figure 2% to 3% of students may be ill during a common, you know, illness season, like a flu time, you take that by the number of students in the building. And we're really talking about a small number of students that, that may need to be tended to in a quarantine room. So having that extra staff there provides us with the flexibility that we need. Honestly, not sure what all the needs are going to be yet until we get into this. So I'd much rather have a few extra hands than not to have enough.
Thank you, Kelly.
Welcome.
Nick Russo, can you kind of go on for Brian? Oh, sorry.
No, let Nick go.
Thank you, trustee Baron. Nick Russo?
Sure, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, you're, you're on.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to address, so I know Brian can't make it, but seeing the building the past few weeks and seeing all the materials that have come into PPE. The specific questions of like wipes, I think Cynthia asked, or I forget who did. We have not only wipes, but spray bottles that are compliant with COVID that you can just spray and walk away. So it actually takes less time to do that. There's hand sanitizers that are, hand sanitizer stations that we're placing around the buildings in strategic spots, but also hand sanitizer for each classroom as well. So in terms of keeping the desks, like the surfaces clean, we have multiple ways to do that, but even the kids' hands, we have multiple ways to do that as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Trustee, trustee Baron, can we also hear from Tina Kosak really quick? Because she's been working with Brian on quite a bit of the PPE and she might be able to talk a little bit more about the disinfectant spray since that was a couple of the questions. Tina, are you there?
Maybe not. Jennifer has a statement, so maybe, or Howard, maybe we can go to your questions, Jennifer's statement.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Tina.
Disinfectant spray meets EP, okay, good. Meets EPA criteria for use against COVID and it's non-irritating, no harsh fumes. It can be even used as a food disinfectant on contact areas. And it is safe, it doesn't need any rinsing or any wiping. And each classroom, each room has those spray bottles. So that's a very quick method of wiping besides the sanitizing wipe.
That's great.
Thank you.
That's great.
Howard?
Thank you. I have one yes/no question and two regular questions. The yes/no question is following up on what trustee Cook said. It sounds like the, the paper or the, the app that we've got, there'll be no auditing of that as kids walk through the, the, the front doors. That'll all be kind of done after the fact by the office over the first hour or two. They'll get the list and make sure that all the kids that are in the building have the, the test done. So it, it's going to be done by the office and not by someone as they're greeting the students in the morning, correct? Or in the afternoon?
You are correct, you are correct.
That's the yes/no answer, thank you. The, the first question is, could you talk about buses? And the bus drivers' responsibilities of checking anything in terms of students and seating arrangements and things like that? And is the bus driver going to be, have the time to do that? Or do they, are they going to need an assistant to help them monitor things in the back of the, of the bus as they're driving?
Jane, are you on by chance?
Yes, I'm here. We will be doing what is called managed seating at the beginning when we get the kids on in the first couple of weeks. Managed seating will be based on their stop and when they are getting on. The, we will then go to assigned seating. Families that are riding the bus together, they will be seated together. Students that are not part of a family, they'll be spread out across the bus. We'll be keeping the kids all across the window seats as best as possible and keeping front seats available. Pat has made sure that the buses are all supplied with mask shields that are individually wrapped so that if any student arrives without their mask, that they would, we would be able to give them a mask. We are depending on the community to have filled out their pre-screening. Pre-screening should be done by the parent for the young children. And the older kids will be doing it themselves. So standing, hoping for all that done by the community. For the bus drivers, we've been going through PD the last couple of days. And we are wiping down the buses with the beautiful disinfectant that we've been working with. So between each tier, between high school tier and, and the middle school, the bus drivers have been supplied with PPE of face masks, face shields and gloves. They will walk through the bus and wipe down all the high, high-touch areas. And we have created time in the routes for them to be able to do that between the tiers. At the end of their route, which would be the completion of their tiers in the morning, they will pull in and we will do a atomization of the bus. We have created time for them to pull in and do that. They'll be able to do that at West Hills, BH Middle School or here at the Bus Barn. We believe that we've given them all enough proper PPE and we are continuing training. And we will continue with the training until we think that we've got everything covered.
Okay, Howard, other question?
Well, so just to follow up on that. Additional support other than the bus driver to be in the back of the bus. The bus driver will be able to maintain the elementary school kids, to keep them in their, their seats. And any discipline issues, I mean, so we're not going to need any additional adult support?
I, I'm sorry?
We're not going to need, so the first question related, or the first follow-up is we're not going to need any additional support, adult support other than the bus driver themselves, number one. And number two, because now the buses are going basically all day. They're taking the kids in the morning, then at noon time, then a pickup and a delivery. The bus drivers are going to be able to, do we need, need any additional bus drivers? Normally, we just need them in the morning and the afternoon as opposed to the noon time hour, now they're going to be pretty busy.
Yes, they're going to be very busy, we're going to be doing twice as much work in the same amount of time. But again, as we keep saying, the population going in is going to be much smaller. So the, the routes, as we get the information, I have not been handed all the information yet of who's going AM and who's going PM. So as soon as I get that information, we'll know what the size of the routes are and how we can consolidate it best so that we can keep the time limits all such and that our current driving staff will be able to cover it all. But again, we're always hiring and there is always a bus driver shortage.
Okay, so the final piece of that is, and when we get to the point over the next month or two of actually looking at our budget and how this all lays out dollars and cents-wise, it, we're, because I believe the, the bus drivers are paid on an hourly basis. Because they're going to be working more, there's going to be additional costs for the buses or the transportation department. So not for tonight, obviously, but I, if, if I, my assumptions are correct, we'll need to have that as a budget variance when we actually get to looking at our next budget go-around.
Remember, we're not driving on Wednesdays for the most part.
Good point, okay. So the, the final question is, I know we're not going to do a account day until the beginning of October, but do we have any feel yet from Sandra Durkey in terms of are we keeping our student population pretty steady? Or are we seeing some loss of students either to homeschool or to private school? And if so, how much that we know at this point? And then obviously, as we go through the month and then get into count day, we'll know a lot more. But do we have a feel directionally in terms of how we're doing?
So I, I can answer that. So looking at enrollment right now, compared to where we were last year, we're down about 70 students. One of the big chunks is at the kindergarten level. I believe we have 90 fewer right now in kindergarten compared to the year before. I know a lot of parents that have reached out to me about what was going on have ended up telling me that, you know what, Pat? We're just staying home this year. We're just staying home, we'll see you a year from now when everyone's figured everything out, everything out and it's safer. And so that's kind of where we're at. I can tell you this, none of it counts until we get to count day. When we see how many students we actually have had in attendance. And at that point, we'll know a concrete number. We'll also know as we move along, talking to some districts that have gone back. Some of them have been surprised, I know one district is missing hundreds of students they thought were enrolled that haven't shown up yet. And so that's been of grave concern. Looking at the data for us as a district, we're pretty consistent with the enrollment and how many people are in attendance. So I talked to Sandra, she wasn't overly concerned, we were going to see what some districts are seeing, you know, 200 or 300 students not accounted for in the first week of school. But we can, you know, if the board's wish, we can give an update. You know, every time we have a board meeting based on where we're at with enrollment, based on attendance records and things like that. So if they had eight days of school, trustee Baron, and you haven't shown up, that's a concern. We need to be reaching out, finding out what's going on.
All right, thanks.
So obviously, obviously with 70 students down, that's kind of a typical plus or minus 100 students. We see that on a regular basis, that's pretty good considering. But obviously, as, again, back to the budget, as Tina pulls together the numbers, you know, 70 students down is going to be a budget hit and our costs are going to be going up. So there are going to be concerns when we get to the budget pull-through in October.
We could, we could talk budget at another meeting. I, I know, Pat, I, I'm just, you know, I'm conscious of, there's a Bloomfield Virtual meeting, you know, I want this to stick to back to, back to school. Jennifer, you had a statement?
Just real quick, and I, I, I'm sorry, I'm going to say this. Obviously, safety and hygiene is super important, we, we never underdo it. But disinfecting the crap out of everything all day long, I, I'm also concerned about that because it breeds resistant bacteria. So I would just ask that, that Leonard, whomever is in charge, all the building principals, that we, we all stay on top of regular briefings of the current research on surfaces themselves. Because first it was four days, then it was four hours, you know. We, we really, we really should have a, a logical approach for like, how many times a day does a desktop really need to be disinfected? You know, seat chairs, seat legs, things like that really don't need to be disinfected as far as I know. I, and I certainly don't know everything. But we need both the medical knowledge of the virus living in the environment and also, you know, current, what the CDC is recommending for the frequency of, of true disinfection, which is different from just cleaning with soap. You know, soap is 100% effective against this virus because it's covered in a lipid surface. So the more just soap we can use to deal with this on, on little and big grubby hands, the better to maybe not have an environment that's just, you know, so full of bleach. And I'm not trying to be scary here that, that everyone's going to get toxic from these chemicals. I worry more about the long-term health of the environment in terms of resistant bacteria.
Thank you. And, and to be honest, that's part of the fun for me, I love researching. So I'm looking forward to reading additional articles and talking to additional people and finding out what we can. And this is why COVID for us as a district is day by day. That's why we haven't come out and said, hey, we're going to wait until five months from now to determine whether or not we can come back. It's one day at a time. And I know I sent you the information from the British Medical Journal and some of the research they've done and things like that. But to me, that, that, that's fun, I like doing that, I'll continue to take that task on. I know Leonard's reading as much as he can. We had a robust conversation about escalating fans today and whether or not they should be used or not used. And how do you clean the blades? And, you know, the overwhelming reports say you don't put an escalating fan in a room. It just spreads everything around, you don't do that. Then we talked about, you put it at the window and then they have it face out and it blows the air out. What happens if you turn it the other way? And the research shows, just don't put an escalating fan in the room. It really isn't going to provide any benefit, don't do it. So those type of things, we're definitely staying on top of. And like I said, it's really fun, so not the COVID part, but the research part.
Great, thanks, Pat. Dave, do you have any public comment?
Yes, coming up right now.
Okay, we have four. Stephanie, will there be something like cloud care for the portion of the day that is virtual while kids are in the hybrid model? Other bordering districts are offering for daily Other bordering districts are offering for daily fee. Leah Moss, thank you very much to the Board of Education Administration Staff and Teachers. I'm so pleased to see the board is considering a motion for return to school of all grades by 10/1/2020. The vast majority of parents understand that there is risk involved in returning students for a school in-person education, whether from COVID, flu, pneumonia, monolukosis or other illnesses. And parents are willing to assume those risks. We're willing to the advice, we are listening to the advice of medical professionals recommending a return to school. The last six months have taught us that even with masks and proper cleaning, we may suffer an outbreak in a building. That doesn't mean that it is a mistake to return to in-person education. Like a business, we can shut down for deep cleaning, reopen and move forward. This is our new, new normal. We can't afford to wait two to three years for a vaccine that is safe and effective for children to return to school. Thank you for your thoughtful, scientific and courageous decision to move forward. Michelle Gilbert, if I'm not ready for my middle or high school kids to be phased in this early, will they still be able to remote in? Rachel Ellis, childcare is not the same as providing resource room support. A Latsky person will not provide what a student needs with, with in-person. All it does is provide childcare. There needs to be time with the support staff helping those with IEPs according to their IEPs. Not having time with resource room staff in-person is a huge concern. Thank you, that's it with public comment. Right now, we have a motion. We're on board business. Can I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the following phase-in dates as presented in the phase-in plan. Subject to Bloomfield Hill Schools adhering to the return to school metrics approved on August 20, 2020 as follows. September 24th for students' grades one through five. September 29th for grades six through eight. October 1st for students' grades nine through 12.
Do I have support?
Um, well, just as a point of information, because we, things have changed a little bit as our knowledge of these resource websites has gotten more sophisticated. So last time we talked about one-day resets, right? And now appreciate that a day may have to be graphed from different websites and really data melded from like three days to really get a sense of a day. So I just, when, when we say as presented, I just want to know if there's room in the as presented for doing more of a mathematical approach to our, to our one-day caveat so that we feel like we have the best numbers possible.
Before we go, before we have, we have, we have, yeah, all right. Do we have a second? Howard, do you second? So we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion, any discussion? Jennifer will say that was part of discussion. Any other discussion? Lisa?
Sorry. Um, all right, well, again, I'm faced with the same dilemma about the metrics. It's the same problem I've had before. We have general metrics, we have general thresholds, but we don't achieve the most important objective. We don't give clarity about when students are going to return to face-to-face, under what conditions. When applied in the practical scenario like the one we have tonight, they seem arbitrary. At what point do we deem it safe to return all students to face-to-face learning every day? How are the phases and rates of phasing determined? What metric matches each phase that we're in in the rainbow chart? In other words, the data is clear. What isn't clear is how my district is interpreting the data. But here I am again. Here's where I'll likely be for the next, the remainder of all our mandatory monthly updated meetings. I don't get any answers to the questions, the same ones I've been asking for the last five meetings. So I'm assuming I'm not going to get any. What happens if the numbers get worse? Not state of Michigan phase three worse or red zone in our rainbow map worse, just worse. You're asking me to trust you to keep my kids safe. You're asking me to trust you to keep all our kids safe. And the thing is, I do. The closest analogy that I can think of, it's not very good. It's the only one that I could, that I could come up with is when you make the call to cancel school at the last minute on a snow day. You use whatever data you have available and eventually you just have to make the call. I, in all the years that my kids have been through the, in the school district, I've never questioned whether a snow day data was reliable or the call made to cancel school. I think under the situation with the pandemic, it's absolutely impossible not to make some mistakes. The rely, the reliable data we had last week is less reliable, maybe on a critical day that you have to make a decision. I know that this isn't a great analogy, the snow day, the consequences and duration of a pandemic make this really a horrible analogy. But for me, they both call on our district superintendent to make a tough call based on whatever information he has available to him at the moment, vetting the reliable from the wacky and doing what's best for our students. I trust the person ultimately responsible for running the district. Even if you can't answer every single one of my questions, I still trust that you're doing what's best for students. So I will vote yes on the phase-in plan, not because I believe in the metrics, but because I believe in our superintendent.
Thanks, Lisa. Any other questions or any other discussion? Okay, we have Jennifer.
Sorry, I, I would just like to throw in there that, you know, since we've been looking at this, there, there's a map with school district data and there are maps with zip code data. And, and the school district one, unless they've changed it in the last few days, is infuriating because it reports actual cases and probable cases together. So not super helpful. And we, we've put in a request for them to parse that out. But, but anyway, my point is, I would just ask that everybody look at zip code and, and BHS district information as well as county information when we are, when we are looking at that.
Pat?
I think it's really important to also look at the breakdown by age group. So if you look at one of our neighboring school districts and you go online and look at the zip code, you're going to say, oh my gosh, they, what is going on? Huge breakout in this community. Then you dig deeper in the data and you realize it's a senior assisted living home that had to break out. That's the majority of cases. Then you step back and say, okay, it's not really students in age groups. So I'm, as a parent, sending my child back to school. You know, the devil's in the details. So did Mark Twain say, there's lies, damn lies and statistics? So we need to really look at the numbers. And I'll be sharing that weekly report with the Board of Education with the breakdown by age group. Because that is something we need to consider as a data point as well. Thank you, President Cole.
Thanks, Cynthia.
So I, I, Lisa, I, I hear you and I'm, it, it, I know how it can seem subjective, but I feel what I, what I'm hearing from Pat is he's trying to work with Munetrix, which is, you know, an agency actually from our community. Buzz Brown is one of the people who started Munetrix is married to Sally Warf, who was kindergarten teacher at East Dover for 25 years, part of our community. And her kids went through our schools. So they are connected to Bloomfield Hills in a very tight way. Munetrix has got a pretty amazing ability to provide great metrics to us. But I think what I'm hearing from Pat is that he will be monitoring data daily. And it's, we have a choice. We can either, you know, do the daily check-in and be so that we can try to have our students face-to-face as much as possible, or we can do what some of our peer districts have done and say, okay, first quarter, nobody's face-to-face. I guess, I, you know, if my children are, were in school today, I prefer that if they have the ability to be face-to-face as much as possible safely. I think that's what we are hearing from our, from our community. So I hear you, I understand why you're hesitant and we have to do some trust. But I also feel that, that we are looking at data as closely as possible to be realistic. But Pat, I do want to say this. It's not just about the senior citizens who are in our nursing homes that we need to be watching. And it's not just our school-aged children that we need to be watching. Because this is, our, our, our children who are face-to-face then are going home to their families. Their families are going to work. It is our whole community that we have to be cognizant of. And maybe it's one thing if it's within a nursing home, but we have a lot of senior citizens who are not in nursing homes, who are part of our community in people, in homes with our students, relating to, to our students. And we need to be sure that we are watching for our whole community.
You're right, it has to be a full community effort to get this done and get it done right. Absolutely.
Lisa, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify too. Cynthia, I know how much data that Pat's looking at and how much our administration's looking at. It's really not that for me. It, it's that, you know, I have an app on my phone. I check the Oakland County and many different dashboards every day. It, the, what I'm not clear about, and I don't think we've ever really been clear about, and maybe there's not a way to be clear. Maybe I'm just looking for something to give some certainty or predictability to something that's, you know, inherently unpredictable. What's not clear is how do we reconcile what we're doing with data? How do we say we're phasing these groups in at these dates, at these rates, without matching it to a metric? How, you know, I don't know what to say to these parents in these emails that say, this all seems very arbitrary. You're sending kids back. Great, we want them back, but what's different about now? Why, why aren't they back the first day of school? Why wouldn't they be going back September 8th? We have, I, I understand the data. I know nobody is reading more data than Pat. I, I understand that and I trust him and what he, and the decisions that he makes. I, I would really like to be able to give some kind of certainty or predictability to this whole process for people that are wondering, this seems arbitrary. By the metrics that we have and we've displayed, these kids should be back on September 8th. Why weren't they? I don't know how to answer that.
Well, I, I can take a stab at that because we're, we're a week or two behind the numbers, right? So we met on August 6th and made the decision to postpone after three weeks of escalation, right? Now it's three weeks later or four weeks later and we're seeing positive signs of de-escalation. So we, we can only react to the trends that are behind us. And so I think that keeping the plan in place where we change, we, we put a break on it. We change the structure of how we're going to do the phase-in in terms of the, I'm talking now about the half day versus the whole day. And I think that we have a much more solid plan now. And clearly, from everything we've heard tonight, every, everybody seems to be very prepared. And for me, I think these dates are much earlier than I expected them to be, honestly. I, I thought we were sort of going to take a big look around, around the end of September and then take it from there. So I, I mean, this is, this is going to be, these numbers and this disease is going to be chaotic. I mean, because it's that contagious, we see these massive fluctuations in ups and downs very regularly. And I, I think we, unfortunately, I think that prevents us from giving community members absolutes and that we have to just resolve to being able to interpret this, you know, as it, as it comes along.
Thanks, Jennifer.
I guess I would like to just say that as an engineer, and I mean, you heard from someone in medicine, but as an engineer, we use things like safety factors all the time. So it sounds like you have this formula and you figure it out. But the truth is, there's always going to be things, there's going to be inclusion in your metal or there's always going to be something that isn't precise. And so then you use a safety factor that goes over this calculation. And basically, that's what Pat is doing. He's looking at the calculations, then he's using a safety factor and he is making the informed decision. So there isn't like a mathematical equation when you do engineering or medicine. Both of those come with an art in order to understand how to apply the data. And I think that it's very clear that Pat has educated himself and he's surrounding himself with experts. And, and I think that you're right to, to trust him. He, I don't think anybody has done more work than Pat. And that's, that's the best we're ever going to be able to do. There isn't going to be a flip the switch, just not going to, that's not the way data works either.
Thanks, Jackie. We have a motion in a second. I'm going to call a vote. Cynthia?
I, I just want one more question, please. So more specifically to Lisa's point. So I'm assuming that if we see a spike in cases, all of a sudden, we're not waiting to shut down. But if we are doing a regular review every 30 days and we decide that we have in, in either hybrid or, or remote learning and we want to become more liberal, that we would be giving parents like two weeks notice when we're moving from one
It's every two day, every two weeks, isn't it? I thought we were reviewing every two weeks, isn't that right, Pat? Not every month.
Well, let me try to clarify. As a cabinet team, we're reviewing every day, seven days a week. Also, I understand that this may stop reporting on Sunday. So Sunday may not be a data point we can look at moving forward. There's some talk about that. We're going to meet as a full board every two weeks. You've been gracious enough to say if I needed a meeting beforehand tonight, no problem. And I appreciate that. We are, if moving to a lower since school or there's any change, yes, we're going to give two weeks to our parents. And if we need to pivot and close schools, we'll need to be able to do that at the drop of a hat based on data.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks, Cynthia. I'll go back to, so we have a motion in a second, Cynthia?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I vote yes, motion passes 7-0. Thanks, Pat, your team for all of your hard work putting this all together. We know it's taken a significant amount of time. So we appreciate it. With that, I call for adjournment. Thanks, everybody. Talk to you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.